To the town council meeting, this is the 10th day of December 2024 at exactly 7:00 PM. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We do have a quorum. I'm not sure if Councilman.
I'm here.
You're here, okay. We do have all councilmen in attendance, and we do have a quorum. So we will conduct business. Let the record also show that Town Administrator Aiken and Town Clerk Gray are also in attendance. Could you please stand for the question?
Chair move.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, invincible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So the first item on the agenda is to reconvene the regular meeting of the town council. So could I get a motion to reconvene?
I move that we reconvene the regular town council meeting.
Second?
I'll second.
I move by Councilman Rock, second by Councilman Ellis. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Hearing none opposed, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is to adopt the agenda. Can I get a motion?
I will. We adopt the agenda as written.
Second?
I'll second.
Moved by Councilman Ellis, second by Councilman Merrill. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Hearing none opposed, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is any announcements or proclamations, and we don't have any tonight. And then we, from there, we go to the public comments. So if you have a comment, you have three minutes, and you'll need to go up to the podium and state your name, please. Speak to the council.
My name is Boyd Sidaway, and I'm here on behalf of myself and several citizens. We called my house and we're discussing the notice that went out in our water bill about lead in our pipes. There's, I've read the letter 100 times, and I'm not an attorney, but I'm sure everything in there is perfectly legal. And as I know from the statement made earlier, the EPA requires you to put it out. So there's two things. It's a legal letter, and they require to do it. What I'm up here for today is to plead with this council to send stuff like this out with a cover letter. Star Valley Ranch, just a few short years ago, was recognized as having the top tasting quality water in the state of Wyoming. We've been under a mandate where our water tastes terrible, and you sent out a note like that. And from what I've been able to tell and talking to the people I've talked to, nobody read it from one end to the other. They read "lead in the water" and panicked. And so I'm saying, please, I don't know why the EPA required us to do that. It would be nice to know. But I went back and checked four years of our consumer confidence report. For those that are interested, you can have up to 15 particles per billion. And how the hell you find 15 particles in a billion particles of water, I don't know, before it's even a concern. Before it's even a concern. We had a test in 2020. We were a three. 2021 and '22, we didn't even have them because we weren't even high enough to retest it. It wasn't worth their time. In 2024, we had a test, and it showed a two. Folks, when you go from three to two, you drop 30% of that lead you had in your pipes three years ago. So again, I'm here to plead, please. There's got to be cover letters. There's got to be something, because we still have some of the better water in the state. But we're sure not doing a damn thing to help people. We do. I'm also reading here, I already got to eat my glasses, that says, "Contact us. Your water utility, you have your water tested." I'm officially up here saying, "I want my water tested. Can you send somebody by to test it?" Please. Now, I'm sure you didn't mean that. I'm sure there's a cost that may go with it. But it doesn't say here, and you haven't changed your mind, so I want a free water test. Now, for those in the audience, if your home was built after 2007 or '08, don't worry. We had ordinance that said you couldn't put galvanized lead pipes in the ground. If you have a home that's older than 2000, there was probably a period in the late '90s when people were just doing it on their own. They weren't putting in lead pipe. So there's a slim chance it could happen. If you've got a house that was built before the '80s, the odds are about 50/50 you got a lead pipe unless you change it. So that should have been sent out, Mayor. There's just common sense that should be done on this. Thank you for my three minutes.
Go ahead. We have somebody else who wants to come up?
Dave Rutherford on this east. I just wondered, when are we going to get rid of the chlorinated water?
As soon as EPA will allow us. Can you, one of you two want to talk on that real quick?
So we, we had our engineer write a letter, and they told us we're going to have to maintain chlorine for the time being. It's anticipated in six months that we'll write another letter and ask if we can stop fluoridation. So they, we didn't have, all our tests were clear, but they didn't like some of the things we've done or the manner of testing, and they want us to keep doing it. So we really have the ability to fight with that right now. And I think it's in our best interest to just wait to six months, rewrite another letter, and see how much we can get. But they have responded and said that they're looking into getting this off, fluoridation. It's an uphill battle when you're dealing with the federal government though. So it is a top priority for us, and we're doing everything we can to get back to not putting chlorine in water.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Any other public comment? Did you have one?
Dolores Albers, 446 Alpine Way, and member of the planning and zoning board. Has that reading gone through three, the 900 square feet?
It's on tonight.
Yes, I didn't, I didn't see it. That's why I'm asking.
So if you want to talk about that, then I'll open it up for comments when we get to that part.
Okay, then I'll wait, I'll wait a minute.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that. Okay, any other thing for the public? Boyd, thanks for your remark. I appreciate it. All right? I'm hearing nothing else. Let's see. We do have the consent agenda, so I would like to read through each item on the consent agenda. We're going to approve the minutes for the November 12 work session and the November 12 regular meeting. We do have two community board appointments. We have Julie Christensen, who's here, so thank you very much for coming. Appreciate that. Appreciate you volunteering for the finance board, and then also Dave Wilson. And I don't think he's here is for the finance advisory board. So we have two new people for that board. We have our disbursements, our dispatch report, which I sometimes have to remind people, it's not a sheriff's report, it's the dispatch. So everything that's dispatched is on that report. And then also the special municipal officer's report. So I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
Okay, moved by Councilman Rock, second by Councilman Denny. All in favor say aye.
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 Aye?
Aye.
Hearing none opposed, motion carries. So the first item on, after that, is the ordinances. So as we get through these, we'll make, we'll open up each one for discussion. So the first one is ordinance 2024-12. Mayor? Yes. Did I forget something?
Title?
Every time, I swear. After this meeting. Can I get a motion to approve by title only and explanation?
I move that we approve by title and explanation any ordinances.
Thank you. Second? I'll second. Moved by Councilman Merrill, second by Councilman Rock. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Hearing none opposed, motion carries. All right, now we'll move on to the ordinances. So the first one is ordinance 2024-12.
This is the third reading of ordinance 2024-12, Title 15 Land Usage, Chapter 154 Zoning. There have been no changes for the third reading, and the reason behind this ordinance is to update the existing language regarding impact fees for new developments. That removes the fees from ordinance and puts them in a fee schedule which is set by resolution. And the council has been going through and doing that with lots of ordinance as far as getting fees out of ordinance and putting them to be set by resolution. I move that we approve the third reading of ordinance 2024-12, Title 15 Land Usage, Chapter 154 Zoning.
Second?
I'll second.
Moved by Councilman Rock, second by Councilman Ellis. Any questions about this ordinance from the audience? Okay, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Hearing none opposed, motion carries. Next item is ordinance 2024-13. I think that's also yours, Councilman Rock?
On P and Z, Mike. This is the third reading of ordinance 2024-13, Title 15 Land Use, Chapter 150 Buildings. This is an update to the existing code, adding language to better clarify the requirements for the certificate of placement. And also moving information to paragraph H, which changes the lettering of the rest of the ordinance. There have been, I don't believe there, there were no changes for the third reading. So I move that we approve the third reading of ordinance 2024-13, Title 15 Land Use, Chapter 150 Buildings.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, moved by Councilman Rock, second by Councilman Denny. Any questions on this ordinance? Clearing up some language. Okay, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Aye?
Aye.
Hearing none opposed, motion carries. The next two ordinance, again, is just, we're just trying to clean up some language. This one is, this is ordinance 2024-15. The explanation is to update the existing code by moving parks and recreation on roadway parking restrictions to 15. Yeah. 2024-15. Did I skip one?
Yeah, I skipped 14.
Okay, how about 2024-14? This is the same thing. So what we found, actually, it was what our special municipal officer found, is we had parking restrictions in parks and recreations, and then we also have it under parking. So we just move it into parking, whereas it makes more sense. And that's what this one is, 2024-14. Okay. Can I get a motion to approve this one?
I assume that we approve ordinance 2024-14, Title 7 Code, Chapter 71, Rose, Be a Cozy in Trap.
Okay, thank you. Second?
I'll second. Go ahead.
I'll second.
Moved by Councilman Merrill, second by Councilman Rock. Any questions on this one? Counsel? Okay, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Hearing none opposed, motion carries. Next item on the agenda, I'll try to get it right this time. This one is ordinance 2024-15, and this is the clarification to the one above, moving it from this ordinance to the prior. So, can I get a motion to approve?
I move we approve ordinance 2024-15, Title 9 General Regulations, Chapter 91, Parks and Recreation.
Councilman Rock, second?
I'll second.
Moved by Councilman Ellis, second by Councilman Merrill. Any questions from the audience? Okay, counsel? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Hearing anything opposed, motion carries. Okay, the next one on the, in here, is ordinance 2024-18. This is Title III, and this is Town Organizations, Councilman Rock.
This is the third reading of ordinance 2024-18, Title III Administration, Chapter 33 Town Organizations. This is an update to change the name and duties of the Planning and Zoning Board to the Planning Commission to be consistent with Wyoming state statutes. There were a couple of minor changes for this third reading, just to clarify the role of the chairman, and also to clarify what constitutes a quorum, and those changes are in orange. I move that we approve the third reading of ordinance 2024-18, Title III Administration, Chapter 33 Town Organizations.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, moved by Councilman Rock, second by Councilman Denny. Any questions from the audience? None? Counsel? Do you have a question?
I did.
Okay, Monica?
Boyd Sidaway again. The question I've got on this is that if you read that ordinance in total, we're turning in a lot of the responsibilities and powers from a real board or commission over to our inspector. We're a small town. We have one inspector who has vacations, time off, sickness, et cetera, et cetera. Nowhere in the ordinance do I see what your backup plan is. So if it's not in the ordinance, I hope it's in the operational book that you're going to put together that says what that job is, because that person could not, may not be able to show up because of an accident or something like that. And whereas a town, we can't put these builders on hold for six months while somebody cooperates. So I encourage you to consider redoing, not redoing. You're going to approve it, I understand that. Modify it again with a new ordinance that modifies it, talks about the backup process. Because we've always had backups in our boards, because we had multiple people, and you don't have a town. Just to suggest.
So I can make a comment to that. At least for the past 10 years, we've always had a backup for our building inspector. We have one that comes out of Alpine, and so this individual is actually a building official. So we've really, we've never let that go. We've always had at least two and sometimes three people, so.
And I agree with you, Mayor. That's for inspecting the building.
Right, which is what you said.
But this is going to be a lot more all encompassing, and inspections would be part of it, but.
Right.
And I don't know that you can have somebody from Alpine come up and run our P and Z commission for a period of time. Just, just like this, just to follow.
All right. Any other questions from the audience? Okay, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Hearing none opposed, motion carries. Okay, next item on the agenda is business regulations. Is that one on? Yeah, thank you, Councilman Rock.
This is the third reading of ordinance 2024-19, Title 11 Business Regulations, Chapter 113 Short Term Rental Residential Units. This has been an update to an existing ordinance to add definitions and to clarify language and to better define prohibitions and penalties in several sections of this ordinance. The only change for this third reading have been some verbiage adjustments to the terms hosted short term rental and non-hosted short term rental. There were no other changes from the second reading. Therefore, I would like to move that we approve the third reading of ordinance 2024-19, Title 11 Business Regulations, Chapter 113 Short Term Rental Residential Units.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been, moved by Councilman Rock, second by Councilman Ellis. Any questions on this ordinance? Hearing none, counsel? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Hearing none opposed, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is ordinance 2024-20. Councilman Merrill, I believe this is from yours?
I'm getting too excited.
That's okay. Page 36.
Okay, yeah, I'm scrolling down, scrolling down. Yeah, oh my gosh, thank you. The ordinance 2024-20, Title 15 Land Usage, it's changing the minimum square footage of single family dwelling. This is the third reading. I move that we pass ordinance 2024-20, Title 15 Land Usage, Chapter 154 Zoning.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
So moved by Councilman Merrill, second by Councilman Rock. So I know we have a couple of questions on this one, so I'm going to open this one up to the audience first, and then to the town council. So I think Dolores, you wanted to talk on this one? He's still. I think you must come up with.
I know, what I was referring to was the 1,200 square feet down, that's ours. Because I haven't had a chance to read this. Again, Dolores Albers, my question first of all is, I would, I'd like to, I'd be interested to know why the planning and zoning board was not notified or any discussion was given to them about why the 1,200 to 900 square feet. So I was a little miffed about that, and that has been something that we have done for, I don't know how many years I've been on council. So I don't know, so I don't know. But my concern for that is that when you, and I already discussed this with Councilman Rock, but when you don't go to 900 square feet, you are going to open up, and I know this sounds crazy, but you're opening up for buildings that are not permitted on here. So I hear things such as, "Well, we'll just build them so that we'll build them according to the ordinances, and then they can't say anything." So I'm talking about, help me here, I'm talking about manufactured homes. And I'm very much, I'm very much concerned, I'm very much concerned about that, because when you drop to 900 square feet, you're talking manufactured homes, because that's, I think that's about their square footage.
Are you talking about like a modular that we allow?
No, 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 I'm talking about manufactured. There's a difference between manufactured and modular. And manufactured are the ones that are built, I believe, with steel that we.
Like a Mogollom, you mean?
But we don't allow manufactured. We do allow modulars.
Right, well, mine's modular, so I understand that. But what I'm, what I'm concerned about is I, I am hearing, I'm only hearing, so I'm not trying to.
Yeah.
But I'm hearing that, "Well, we'll just, we'll just change a little bit of that, and we'll just build them to their specs, and then they can't say anything about that." But I was assured by Councilman Rock that we will never, ever allow, and of course, the association does not allow that too.
Right, yeah.
But why 900 square feet? I mean, I understand a little bit of that, but why are we going so low?
I don't see rationale.
That's what I like to, the rationale, thank you.
I had to explain that part of it was, like, the federal government might have a hand in it eventually, saying that we, because of the housing crisis that we've been having, that we would need to make it more affordable to people. Also, I mean, 900 square feet is a minimum, so people can make bigger homes than that.
Absolutely, I understand.
So it would just be the footprint can be that small.
Okay, so I just, I just have a concern, because when you hear, when you hear stuff out in the community, and your community is not like notified or anything like that, and you weren't notified, that's a real bit disturbing.
Well, you have a liaison that should have probably, I guess, at that point, but it is, I mean, this is our third reading, so it's been out for three months. And I do understand the concern, because I've actually talked with a few residents that have had that. And I do understand, like, some of their concerns with that, but I also feel like if we have homes that are 900 square feet and they're made up to the other ordinances that we have, they would still be suitable for our community, and hopefully more affordable for people that are moving in.
But I worry about people trying to bypass that. That's, that's my, that is kind of my concern, is that they might try to bypass that, and you know, I, you know how, you know how it works.
Oh, yeah. No, I mean, but unfortunately, they try to bypass it with 1,200 square feet, so.
Well, 1,200 is a little bit harder to bypass, but 900 isn't so much. But I have a concern. And I understand, people don't have the money to build like they used to. I get that.
I think I would like to add that now that we have Scott Kazer as the building official, I know, I personally feel a lot more confident about his ability to make sure people aren't skirting or somehow getting away with, you know, not following the ordinances, because he's full time on it, you know.
Okay.
Full time, you know, and it just, and I know from our town administrator, he's been doing a really good job just starting to kind of pull in and tidy up some of the things that, just in some of our other ordinances, like the driveways, for instance. We talked about one today where, in the past, we just haven't been able to close that gap and make sure people are staying within the ordinances, and I just feel like we're on a really good path to make sure those kind of things don't happen.
Because I know we've had a few of them, we've gotten past us, but not much.
I know Carolyn Thacker's in the audience, and someone else might know this too, but I think some of the DZC and Rs have even smaller square footage, allow like 750 square feet in some parts too. Yeah, so kind of in the middle. So I don't think that probably doesn't allay all your concerns, but.
Yeah, I think we were 900 for a long time, and we changed.
We were in the, when Dawn was here, they, they, bigger homes to upgrade, to keep our assessment, I mean, our values up. And I get that too, but.
Yeah, and this was kind of interesting, because we had somebody here at the last meeting that wanted to build an A-frame. And, and the 1,200 was more difficult with the A-frame, and with the 900, you could do several stories if you wanted to, so. You know, we've kind of been back and forth on this one.
I just want to plant seed.
Yeah, some people aren't happy about it, I know.
I appreciate that.
Now, I appreciate you getting here.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Dolores.
All right, anyone, any other questions on this one? Okay, counsel, I know there were a couple of comments earlier today, so does anybody have anything else? Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 Aye?
Opposed.
Okay, one nay, and the rest was yes. Okay, let's see. Ordinance 2024-21. That one's, yeah, they buy it. Councilman Rock, thank you.
This is the second reading of ordinance 2024-21, Title III Administration, Chapter 35 Municipal Court. This is an update to the existing ordinance, which will update the bond for the short term rental ordinance that we just passed the third reading on, so it's updating the bond schedule for those paragraphs. There have been no changes since the first reading. So I move that we approve the second reading of Title III Administration, Chapter 35 Municipal Court, ordinance 2024-21.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Rock, second by Councilman Ellis. Any questions on this? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Aye?
Aye.
Hearing none opposed, motion carries. I need to find the next one, so bear with me. Now I'm lost, Councilman Merrill.
You should be.
Thank you. I don't know.
A lot of ordinance.
There's a lot today. Oh, there it is, okay. All right, ordinance 2024-22. And I think, it looks like I explained this one last time, so I'll explain it again. This ordinance is a second reading, and this was to, it was to update the existing ordinance to eliminate the road advisory board from town organizations and reserve that subsection for future use. So I know we'll have a lot of conversation about this one, but I'll make the motion to approve if I can get a second. I'll second, okay. Moved by Mayor Byers, second by Councilman Rock. All right, I'll open that up to discussion for the public? Nothing? All right, now, councilman?
I disagree after thinking about the board. I actually think that the board needs to be expanded to cover the entire general fund. So I'm going to go and know and recommend that the whole thing be redone to repurpose the board to cover the entire general fund, just as the water board addresses the water enterprise. I think this board should be charged to cover the entire general fund to keep the town focused on use of the money for roads.
Okay. That's one, Merrill, but you just had some.
So just after visiting our constituents and such, I also disagree. The road board, the purpose is to keep some focus on our roads and to assist the town council in making, area advising, in making decisions. So I feel like there's definitely still a purpose to this board. And to just get rid of it, I think, then also doesn't give the constituents a platform to address certain things that they're wondering as well, so, about with our roads.
Okay, thank you. Does any other councilman have a comment? No? Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 Aye? Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so we have two nays and three ayes. So motion. So motion, uh, passed, sorry. Okay, next item on the agenda is B, we have no new ordinances. And so we'll go right into the public hearing, this is a plot amendment. And, um, we do have a recommendation. I'm not sure who's gonna read that, are you gonna read that? Okay.
It is, it does say that it's from me.
But PNC did this, right?
Yes, this is, uh, the planning and zoning board received a plot amendment application on September twenty-third, twenty twenty-four from DM LP Resources LLC, doing business as Rover Buildings on behalf of Courtney Brown, fifty white pine, plat six, lots one twenty and one twenty-one. The above-mentioned lots in plat six were surveyed by Surveyor Sherwood Limited after Wyoming. Letters were sent to all landowners of the plat and lot numbers within the three hundred foot radius of plat six, lots one twenty and one twenty-one, ask for our ordinances. During the thirty-day public comment period, the planning and zoning were board, planning and zoning board received no written correspondence against the plat amendment request. Furthermore, during our public hearing meeting on November thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, there were no objections. The planning and zoning board worked within the parameters of the Towne Star Valley Ranch ordinances and cannot find anything detrimental to the surrounding properties nor any ordinance within the purview of the board that permits board denial of the application. The planning and zoning board hereby recommends that the town council approve the lot combination for DM LP Resources LLC, doing business as Rover Buildings on behalf of Courtney Brown, fifty white pine, plat six, lots one twenty and one twenty-one.
And there's a weird map. If you can see it. But this is on white pine, both funky lots, so, um, so they would like to combine those. They'll still keep the CCNRs and everything will still stay as they are today. For those people who are questioning. Any questions on this?
So where's the lot that they dumped all the fill on?
It's the.
One twenty.
Lot one twenty.
You see the dotted line?
Yeah.
That's the fill.
Yeah. And where is that going away?
It's not.
Well, when they, first of all, they're gonna spread it out to see what's gonna happen and then, then they have to take whatever is excess according to the engineers, is what we're, we hope, so. The ironic thing is, two years ago, when this, before this happened, we had, both the council and the PNC said, you just need to combine the lots, they're too small. And now that's where they're back here trying to get this done, so. Sometimes you have to listen. So anyway, any other questions on this one?
Under the ordinance, the fill is gonna have to be cleared off of the other person's lot and the setback.
Yes.
Yeah.
So we'll see what plays out after that.
Yes, we will.
We do have legal involved in this one, so.
Does that cleanup actually be done before you approve this? Is it a condition of art approving? It's the wrong way to get it done.
Yeah.
They can't build on it until it is approved and it's gotta be done prior to the, the, the new building permit being issued. So they're gonna be stuck one way or the other.
Yeah. No, we won't issue a permit.
I'm an ignorant grad, I'm dead dumb, but what are they putting on that lot that they wanna combine it?
A home and garage.
A home and garage? That there's a big mass on it?
It is right now.
And so why are we recommending, or why are you recommending approval of it until, and why are you telling the builders LLC, Rover, et cetera, that they have to remove that before this can be approved? I don't understand the process.
Do you wanna deal with it or do I get it?
Well, I can, yeah, go ahead.
We went with, to legal authority and legal came back and said, yeah, that's probably not correct. However, you can't stop people from putting rocks on their yard. And that's what they did.
Fifteen feet.
So I believe this will help solve the problem, is if we can combine that into one lot. But they still have a lot of work to do, obviously, so.
Can, can I just ask?
Yeah.
What kind of a document of understanding you got between the council, or I should say, the town and the builder about that cleanup? Is there a legal document you're gonna put on the?
There was one.
There is.
Uh, last, was it a year ago?
Yeah.
A little over a year ago, the town issued a document telling them it had to be removed completely before the end of the, I think they gave them sixty days. And then the town backed off and said, no, wait a minute, it's too close to the snow falling and we don't want you ruining the roads by hauling the rocks off. So they delayed it until July or June of this year and then that's when the legal stuff all started happening. And that's when, uh, DM LP bought both lots and came back with this other proposal. We then went to the town attorney and that was the, that was the, uh, the ruling we got. You're gonna be on real shaky grounds if you try and make them take off rocks that they brought onto your property because there's nothing in the ordinance that says you can't put rocks on, so.
And then we're dealing with, we're dealing with a different owner too, which didn't make it easy.
Something in writing because, please, understand, this is nothing bad about you all, but you all maybe not be here when we have the time it comes to build and somebody else needs a building permit. So I would recommend that you have that county document be either included or at least mentioned and referenced in your documents that you're putting together with this landlord. Just cover your, dot your t's.
Cover your. Cross the t's and dot the i's.
Cross your i's, whatever it is.
Do you want me to go ahead and do a motion for table? I don't know. All right. I mean, Trevor, do you have anything else on that? I know you've dealt with a lot of the discussion back and forth on this.
I've been, I've been in contact with the other lot owners near there. I think they've actually cleared stuff off of their property already, but, uh, I've been in contact with Rover Buildings, a lot on this, and our attorney, and that's the most sound advice he gave us to, you know, basically, he said, show me where it says you can require somebody to remove the lot, the gravel. But he said, you don't have to approve a permit unless they do what you asked people to do.
Right, we don't can.
Uh, we've discussed this multiple times with the attorney and everyone else, so I, I think we're on the right track. This is a.
You can do that, yeah. And gets the ordinance so this doesn't happen again, so. A new person.
I'm Julie Christensen, I'm at two ninety-one Holly. So my question is, they have the fill in, in, into the easement property lines. Is there anything you can do or want to do before, they, I mean, because if they take five years to build, can that sit out there for that long?
That's what Trevor, I think, was just saying, is they've already removed it.
No.
They have not.
On the other property owners.
It still is.
But if, we really don't have legal authority to tell somebody to remove rocks off the property, that's what it comes down to.
Even if it's in the easements, though?
In any easements, we might be able to.
Yeah.
But it's not in a road easement, is it?
No.
No.
Yeah, that's the issue.
You can't control that.
So, they, they do not have a building plan yet of what they wanna put there. And that's why we can't say whether it'd be approved or not, but they anticipate a plan of what their square footage is, what home looks like, um, and all that, so.
The original white home they had designed for that property did not fit on that property.
No, I understand that, and so did I understand that this is also a new owner too? So the owner that started the pole barn that got torn down is no longer involved?
That's correct.
But unfortunately, the company that was building the pole barn now owns the property.
No, I under, I understand that.
Yeah.
I understand that.
But the original owner is not involved. That is true.
Okay, thank you.
It's been a challenge.
I, I mean, I.
I think our goal is to get it fixed.
Yes.
So.
It's pretty unsightly right now and that's why I'm asking.
You're right.
It is.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve then?
I move that we approve the lot combination for DM LP Resources LLC, doing business as Rover Buildings on behalf of Courtney Brown, fifty white pine, plat six, lot one twenty and one twenty-one.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Okay.
Okay, so you got a motion by Councilman Rock and a second by Councilman Ellis. Right? Okay, any other questions on this? I opened it up before we really had time, but. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Let me see. Okay, hearing none opposed, motion carries. Four to one. All right, so the next item on the agenda is the mayor and council. And, um, I, I have a couple of things I need to talk through. So, first of all, we had an audit presentation last week, last month, and, um, there were a couple of errors on that. So we should hopefully see a new one fairly soon. But we haven't accepted that one yet, so it's not, I don't think it's on, did you put it on the website?
The, the, yeah.
The draft is on the website.
The current incorrect draft is on the website.
It's on the website. Evidently, an intern did part of our audit, so. So we'll get that fixed before we get it finalized and send it up to the state, so. But I did want to let everyone know that. And then there's been a lot of questions about my world and what I'm doing, so, um, I wanted to, um, wasn't gonna talk about this tonight, but I will. So anyway, um, I will be resigning as mayor. And I have my house for sale and I will be moving back to Utah. And I've been here fourteen years, so it's kind of weird, but I'm a grandma now and they need some help. We have, they have, we have two-year-old twins and a four-year-old, so. So I'm gonna move closer so I can go be a grandma. So I've been doing this ten years and so, um, it's, it was a hard decision, I'll tell you, it was a very hard decision. So anyway, so that's kind of where we are, the council's known for a little while, we're just trying to plan. And we put together some transition information this morning with the council, so just, we'll share that. So on the seventh, at ten AM, we're doing the swearing-in ceremony and that will be for, um, Councilman-elect Toulson and Councilman Ellis. After that, after the swearing-in ceremony, we will be doing a, um, a work session. And in that work session, the town council will elect a mayor, so the mayor has to be elected from the town council. And then on, and that will be effective, I think my last official day is the third of February is what we kind of figured out. And then, um, so we'll do that on the seventh. And then, I'm looking at Kristen because she helped us walk, walk me through this this morning. On the fourteenth, we have our regular council meeting. And I don't have any notes on that one.
No.
Nothing, nothing, nothing according to this. Also, on the seventh, we'll, we'll put together a notification to the public to let them know that we will have a council position open. So that position will be, so the mayor is elected from the town council and then we'll have a vacant seat and so that vacant seat will put out to the public. And so we'll ask for people who are interested in serving the two-year term on the council. And then, so the town council will start the interviewing process right around the fourteenth, right? And make a decision between the fourteenth and fourth.
Deadline for the applications for the open council position is on January twenty-third.
Okay, thank you.
And selection the week of the twenty-seventh. And then swearing-in of the new mayor and new council on February.
February fourth. Okay? So luckily, we have an ordinance already, thanks to when Boyd was there, but we have pretty, pretty easy thing to follow. And so it was a pretty, I think it'll be an easy transition. I will tell you though, I'm very proud of this council, we have a great council. This is very hard for me, but I'll be here one more meeting, this is not my last meeting. And we have a really good staff and a great administrator and I think that, you know, for me, this is really the time that I can feel good about leaving because I think everyone's in good hands, so. So there you go, I'm gonna go be a grandma. So that's what's going on with me. Does anyone else in the mayor council have anything? Council?
Yeah, I do. Most of you are familiar with what the sign says, is Mountain View Estates, down on Muddy Stream. They have put together a new proposal for the development of that property. It will be heard before the county commissioners on December seventeenth. It is my understanding and information from the planning people in Cameron that they are, they believe the county commission will kick it back to the planning and zoning board for Lincoln County because it has not gone through Lincoln County's planning and zoning since they don't have a meeting in December. Uh, however, there is a strong possibility, not a strong possibility, let me rephrase that. There's a possibility that the county commissioners could approve it, so.
So call your county commissioners.
Is it just what, are they just replating the thing or, it's all plated, is it not?
It is, but they're replating.
What's the total number of dollars?
Oh, it's, the density is pretty high. They only have two, a couple of exits out on, they've got two exits out on Muddy, one on Vista West, which we haven't approved yet.
Fifty-two townhouses and fifty-nine, it's like fifty-nine lots.
Is that document available?
Yeah.
It will be official tomorrow at five o'clock.
And it should be on the planning commission's website, I would think, or the county commissioner's website?
Should be.
Tomorrow at five o'clock.
Is that what they're telling you?
Yeah, that's what they're telling me.
So I know there's a lot of concerns out there on this one, but public needs to get involved, Mr. Sidaway.
Does the roads still intersect and come into our town?
Yes.
And where, where does the town stand on that?
Right now, we haven't approved it. And the county knows we haven't approved it, so.
Does, does the, the platters understand?
Yeah, they do.
Have we had, have we had negotiations with them?
No.
What it's gonna cost?
No.
Are we gonna charge them?
Oh, you better believe it.
Now you know why we got rid of that set amount.
Because we had that set amount, but, yeah.
But we haven't approved them even connecting it.
Because last time we were gonna let them just do it, remember?
Yeah, I know. We think they may come to us for an annexation again, so, but we'll see. So.
Where, where are they getting the water and the infrastructure? Are they drilling wells?
Well has been driven.
They have a well.
Now, again, according to my contact in Cameron, the well is drilled in such a spot that because it is a municipal well, there must be an open barrier around it of X number of feet that extends into private property on the north, that they're gonna have to get cleaned up.
How about the septic?
Yeah, they're all on septic tanks and as far as I know, Lincoln County is still holding them to no nitrates crossing Muddy Stream.
Yeah.
They should be preventing, but.
It's okay, we did venting.
They deal with the county commissioners about having septic's up here.
Yeah.
And how we're gonna put in another, how many?
Uh, fifty, what did I say? Fifty-two.
Fifty-two townhomes.
Well, this was my understanding, because I met with, I talked to the county commissioners on Friday about it and this was plotted a long time ago, they don't allow this today. But since they're replating, to me, they shouldn't allow it now, which was, was what we said.
In each townhome, there's four.
So really, it's not fifty-two, it's two hundred.
Yeah.
That's right.
So there's a lot of concern about the septic of town.
So you can make public comment on this.
They will take written comments and, uh, the meeting will be in, in, uh, Afton at the planning office and it's open to the public.
Yeah, but I think you have to get.
Seventeenth.
I think you have to get on, you have to get on the agenda to comment.
And so do the written comments go to Afton or they go to Cameron? Cameron. That makes it hard.
So, yeah.
They'll take written comments and emails.
Yeah. You go to the county's website, there, all of their emails are on there.
Is that a planning and zoning meeting or is it?
No, this, one in December is a county commission meeting. This has not gone through the Lincoln County Planning and Zoning. So they believe, at least the person I talked to today, excuse me, yesterday, believes that the county commission will kick it back to the planning and zoning committee. However, as you well know, it can go in the way of the county commission.
Mayor, can I make a suggestion? If there's anybody in this room that doesn't agree with what's going on, we elect county commissioners.
Yes, we do.
And if I'm correct, two of them are from Saratoga. And I would say it would be appropriate to send an email, a letter or something to convince those commissioners that we live here and they're right to us and it's going astray and we ought to be, they ought to form their own roles and have a hearing to break through their. and have a hearing to break through their, their county commi, or I mean, their planning and zoning.
Yeah.
I would suggest that very strongly. Letters will help them to convince them to do that, Mayor.
Did you have another question, Denny?
No, I just had a comment that it's disingenuous for them to say that they planted for 52 so-called houses when it's really not 52, it's to whatever 52 comes for it.
Yeah, it's 52 townhouses, each townhouse appears to have four units.
That, that's disingenuous to them to say, because it makes it sound like it would be kind of okay, but it's really not.
No.
The water, sewer, or sewer system.
There's no sewer system, it's all septic.
Oh.
It's all septic.
The population, too, like the increase in traffic. And the roads, the water.
Yeah, so. So, I mean, I do know that there, they have some concerns, too, but I don't know how they'll act on this. I have no idea.
Just one more thing to add on the topic. There was a public notice in the Star Valley Independent this week about this upcoming meeting that does have all the information about it as well as web links for where you can find the documentation packet and stuff. So if you guys want to look at that.
Good, thank you very much for bringing that up. Counsel, any other comments?
Yeah, I had two things. So these are committees and such that are associated with the town. I just wanted to announce so that the public was aware. And they'll be posted in other places, but there is a group of us that are starting Neighborhood Watch in the first, like, citizen meetings will be January 16 at 7:00 PM at Three King Inch Restaurant in their, like, back room, the little event area. Another thing that's been started is there's a firm brigade that is starting for volunteering for helping residents that can't clear their own barns. So this information will be posted, but you're also welcome to reach out to me if you have any questions.
Kristen, did you say burns?
Snowbirds.
Yes, no birds.
Snowbirds.
Oh, snowbirds.
Do you think, Councilman Ellis, do you think it would be worth writing something up for the newsletter? Yeah, I would be happy to do that. Does that make sense?
It makes sense.
Okay, okay, thank you. Close topics would be great. Yeah, cool. Thank you for bringing that up. Anyone else?
The only thing I have, I have two quick things. One is tomorrow afternoon at 2:30, the Travel and Tourism Board is meeting. If anyone is interested in coming to that, he'll be here. And then, for context, tonight is the mayor's 120th regular town council meeting. So she's been at it a long time.